Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Mosley. Mrs. Kyl Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavell President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. For those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order business is to amend the agenda. There's a motion to amend.
So move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda has been amended. Our next order business is proclamations. We'll begin with Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. If everyone who is here from Stand for All Pittsburgh and United Against Hate Week would like to come up and join me, and while you're doing so, I'd like to just say a few words about this. This is really meaningful to me. I've taken part in this organization and attended as much as possible the monthly meetings for what is now known, and you might have seen it in the news today, has officially been launched as Stand for All Pittsburgh. And this is a group whose mission is to, as much as we don't like to say what we're against, we like to say what we're for, was initially proposed as a, you know, stand against hate and bias organization. We are for dialogue, showing up for one another and interrupting hate and bias. And I'd like to encourage any council members to join me at this, at the table here for these monthly meetings. I'd also like to encourage anyone who might be listening who's part of an organization that would like to learn more about getting involved in Stand for All Pittsburgh to do so. So, whereas every Pittsburgher deserves to live with value and dignity, to feel secure from targeted acts of violence and discriminatory language, and to be seen and heard without fear or favor, and whereas Stand for All Pittsburgh was created to unify neighbors, organizations, and leaders across southwestern Pennsylvania, in a collective commitment to prevent, identify, and address bias and hate incidents, and whereas the coalition builds trust and fosters relationships across cultural, linguistic, neighborhood, and demographic differences, offering a platform for learning, understanding, and solidarity, and whereas Stand for All Pittsburgh provides vital support to community members who are targets of hate and bias, while working in collaboration with local and regional government agencies, faith-based institutions, businesses, nonprofits, and community organizations, and whereas United Against Hate Week is a national initiative that brings communities together to reject hate, bigotry, and bias in all forms, and to affirm the values of dignity, safety, and belonging for all, and whereas this year's United Against Hate Week will occur during the week of October 19th, and whereas United Against Hate Week calls on city leaders, diverse community organizations, residents, schools, local businesses, and faith groups to work together to prevent violence and discriminatory acts, a mission embodied daily in the work of Stand for All Pittsburgh. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend Stand for All Pittsburgh for its leadership in building a broad and inclusive coalition committed to countering hate and bias in all forms, and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the week of October 19 through 25th, 2025, as United Against Hate Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. I want to let our guests say a few words, and anyone who would like to say a few words, I'll just, I'll finish by saying, you might know currently at the convention center, the Eradicate Hate Summit is happening. I'll let them all exit as quickly as possible because we have the governor speaking down there in a few minutes or a little bit later this morning. But, you know, it's easy to think about this proclamation in this week now and think about political violence, but truly, that's just one flavor of hate and bigotry, right? It's sometimes hardest to call it out when it's happening within your own family, or within your own group of friends, or within your own political party. And so I think it's incumbent upon us all to attend the events that this group puts on, to watch the films, to have the discussions, and dig deep within us to see how we can be the best version of ourselves as we are in dialogue with those who might disagree with us, or online, or on social media. So I'll stop there. Congratulations, and whoever would like to say a few words, multiple people can come up.
I'll just do a little plug for the United Against Hate Week. Great. So, what a privilege to be here this morning. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Strasburger. Thank you to City Council for recognizing our efforts. I'm Lydie Barlow. I serve as Executive Minister of Christian Associates, and I'm a member of the Stand for All Pittsburgh Steering Committee. I want to say that anybody's organization, big or small, can plan an event during United Against Hate Week, October 19 through 25. It can be as simple as a potluck dinner for folks in your neighborhood, or a candlelight vigil to commemorate the importance of peace in our communities. It could be a training, a lecture, the sky is the limit. Visit unitedagainsthateweek.org to find our toolkit for United Against Hate Week events, and then click on that green add event button so that your event can be part of our community calendar.
Thank you so much for having us here today. I want to invite everybody here in the room and on Zoom to join us. Once a month, we do have our meetings. Stand for All, and the key word there is the "all," an alliance. We are against hate and bias, but we're for love and respect of all people. So if you want to join us, an easy email, and she's standing right there, is ajackson@herefoundation.com. The meetings happen in South Side at Cohatch. You can come in person, you're welcome. If not, we also have a Zoom hybrid possibility. So think about it, and hopefully some of you right here today will join us in October. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Patrice O'Neal. I'm not from Pittsburgh. I'm the co-director of United Against Hate Week on a national level. And we started it in the San Francisco Bay area because we had white supremacists marching in our streets, and the mayor of Berkeley and other cities, Oakland, San Francisco, recognized there needed to be something for ordinary people in our communities to do, and they started a poster campaign. And we invited them to our office of, not in our town, in Oakland. We said, what do you want to do next? And they formed United Against Hate Week. We're now in over 200 cities, and we're so excited about this first event in Pittsburgh. And we know that the city, I've been coming here since 2018 after the attack at Tree of Life and made a film, and I saw the tremendous, tremendous capacity of this community to love and support their neighbors. And so we're very excited about what you do with United Against Hate Week. We want to spread your ideas around the country. So thank you so much, Councilmember Strasburger, and all the council members who supported this. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. Will the 50 Cent people please come forward? Now, allow you know Bessie Miller. She's been here before. She's been involved across the city of Pittsburgh. Her mother worked for...
What mayor? Sophie.
Sophie Mazel. Somebody that was almost taller than, or was tall ass, but anyway. And both their dads were police motorcycle officers, and Bessie's dad started the Oneila Club, was one of the founders of the Oneila Club. It's just, she's been involved a lot. But one of the things people don't know is she is an amazing softball player herself. Yes, she's coached a lot of people, but man, this whole team is, they're amazing women. I watched them, and they are beasts on that field, is all I'm going to say. They're amazing. The National Senior Games Association is a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting the benefits of competitive sports, physical fitness, and active aging for adults aged 50 and older. I thought 50 was old when I got here because I was 50, and now I'm at 66, going on 67, I'm thinking, eh, 50, they're young. And whereas, the senior games promote camaraderie, spirited competition, and healthy active lifestyles for over 100,000 adults aged 50 and older through Olympic-style athletic events held nationwide. And whereas, the senior games movement began in 1969 with the first ever event held in Los Angeles, California, and has since grown nationwide, culminating in the inaugural National Senior Games Championship in 1987. And whereas, in 2025, National Senior Games, the largest multi-sport championship in the nation for adults 50 and over, were held in Iowa. From July 24th to August 4th, featuring more than 20 sports and drawing thousands of athletes from across the country. And whereas, among the many outstanding athletes and teams competing, the women's 60 and over softball team named 50 Cent proudly representing Pittsburgh distinguished themselves by winning the first place in their division, prevailing over nine other top-tier teams from across the nation. Pittsburgh came in number one. And whereas, the Pittsburgh team's victory not only showcases their athletic skill, determination, and teamwork, but it also brings great pride and recognition to the City of Pittsburgh and its vibrant community of senior athletes. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh proudly acknowledges the exceptional dedication and achievement of the senior women's softball team 50 Cent, and extends heartfelt congratulations on their remarkable victory in securing the national championship title. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, to be Pittsburgh 50 Cent Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Oh, they bought little gifts too. How nice. Father little 50 Cent pins.
Thank you.
Championship pins.
We got the name 50 Cent. We started this team when we were all 50.
Oh, get on it. So here, tell that story. Introduce yourself to the public and tell the story.
My name's Leanne Dukovitz-Zeiss. We got the 50 Cent name because we started this team when we were all 50, and everyone on the team are girls, are women from around the city of Pittsburgh. And this is our sixth national championship.
Sixth national championship.
Our team members were Becky Bowens, Poe Campano, Carol Good, Beth Hack, Katie Howling, Doodles Harrington, Mary Lambing, Betty McGuire, Bessie Miller, Marian Murray, Jennifer Rowley, Sharon Swartz, Sandy Spencer, Laurie Soprano, Cookie Woods, Leanne Zeiss, and Louise O'Donnell. I just want to take this time to thank my friend, Councilwoman Teresa Smith, because she's been here for us for many, many things over my lifetime and my friend. And I just want her to say thank you for asking us to come and giving this us award. It's a special award for us, especially for my friend Teresa Smith.
You want to come up?
She wants to take a picture.
Want to take a picture. Can all the council members come up, please?
It's just great for especially the young girls here, because we've both been playing ball in the city of Pittsburgh since we were like nine. We went on to play college ball, came back, and we all just stuck together and just kept on playing.
And they've been amazing. I can tell you this. When there's something happened in the community, and Bessie Miller and I pull up, people know. They just know. Well now, Bessie Miller, you can come up again. So I've known Bessie when I, my husband and I ran Westwood, Oakwood Athletic Association, and Bessie was running Elliott West End Athletic Association. And she's still there, and still does a ton of stuff for the kids. The kids know Ms. Bessie, respect her tremendously, and the families know Ms. Bessie, because she's been there for so long. Her family, not only did her dad, was he actively involved, and was he a police officer, but her mother was extremely involved. There's a playground named after her mother. They keep the kids busy. Can we have everybody from the city's sports pirates, championships, can you come forward? Everyone, your families, everyone. Come on, Russ McCune. Russ, Russ. Come on up, both of you, both of you. Don't make Ms. Bess come back and get you. Danielle, Jody, come up. Bessie told me to do something. I said, yes, ma'am. Now, I, we've had a lot of, you know, you hear a lot of negative about things that happen on the ball fields with our kids, and we've had some incidents in baseball, softball, football, everywhere. And there's somebody that, like, I can just tell you, they hold the bar so high, and make sure that if anybody does something in the community, they address it immediately. And so these kids have a safe place to play there. It's a great place for the kids to be. And I want to thank them for all that they do for the City of Pittsburgh. Whereas, City Sports Pittsburgh Pirates Nike RBI Mayor's Cup is an annual youth baseball and softball championship series proudly organized by City Parks. And I'd want to thank Director Vargas and her team for the great job they do, and sponsored by the Pittsburgh Pirates. Thank you to them for their sponsorships. Whereas, in 2025, the 2025 championship games were held on July 29th and 30th at PNC Park, showcasing the talent and dedication of young athletes from across the city. And whereas, on July 29th, the Elliott West End Athletic Association 12 and Under Elliott Hawks and 15 and Under Softball Elliott Falcons competed with heart and determination, each emerging victorious and earning RBI championship titles. Whereas, the Elliott Hawks, led by Julian Penix and Joel Akry, who we all know, the Akry family, and Reggie Johnson triumphed over, I wish Anthony Culca was in here, triumphed over Brookline. Want to thank, congratulate Brookline for a good game too. And with a thrilling 13-12 win, while the Elliott Falcons, guided by Coach Sam Bell, Liz Ford, and Casey Meredith, secured a hard-fought 9-8 victory after 11 and 10 innings. And whereas, special accommodation is extended to Coach Sam Bell, whose 34th year legacy with the EWEAA began at the age of six as a player who continued at age 20 as a coach. Her unwavering dedication along with that of her fellow EWEAA coaches has profoundly impacted generations of young athletes. These coaches exemplify excellence, commitment, and community spirit, devoting countless hours to nurturing and mentoring their team. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh proudly honors the achievements of the 12 and Under Elliott Hawks and the 15 and Under Elliott Falcons, and expresses heartfelt appreciation to the coaches and volunteers who tirelessly support and uplift our youth through sports and mentorship. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, to be EWEAA 12 and Under and 15 and Under Softball Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Just say the team players, the players' names. I put them at the end so I don't have to say them.
The Elliott Hawks, Danica Claussen, Jordan Claussen, Charlie Butler, Aubrey Liddon, Peyton Hill, Leleian North, Meela Hernandez, Abigail Johnson, Annabelle McCune, Aubrey Elliott, Emma Thorhar, Elliott Hawks. Elliott Falcons, Amora Slade, Deja Reed, Desiah Trent, Destiny Wood, Elise Ramos, Eva Ramos, Janaya Mathis, Casey Elliott, Chloe Claussen, Kylie Givens, Renia Walker, and Danica Claussen, along with the coaches, Joel, Joel and Joel, they get them all confused, Sam, Reggie, and Casey. And just one note, the Mayor's Cup, the city sports program started in 1995, and Elliott was the first recipient of the Gold Cup back in 1995. And we still continue to strive to always provide good space for kids and youth, and try to make sure that every kid has an opportunity to play.
Is anybody else going to say a few words? Do you girls at least want to say your names? Come up and say your names. Say your names.
Tell them the position you play.
Say your name and position.
My name is Annabelle McCune, and I play left field, like left center.
You're Russ McCune's daughter?
Yes.
And you're so cute. I can't get over this. Thank God you got your mother's genes.
My name's McKenna.
My name's Casey Elliott. I played first base.
My name is Jordan Claussen, and I play right field and catcher.
My name's Danica Claussen, and I play shortstop.
My name is Deja Reed, and I play left center.
My name is Aubrey Elliott, and I played second base.
Where else would the Elliott's play, right? Anybody else? Coaches, come up. Get up here, Sam.
I am Sam Bell, and then this is Julian. He also coaches the 12 U. I'm not really big on words and stuff, but I just want to say thank you, obviously, to Teresa for, you know, honoring us in this, and then to Bessie especially, because honestly, this whole organization doesn't run without her. You know, she does everything and helps everyone. We all are just here to help her and make sure that, you know, all these kids have a place to play and, you know, just try to have fun and enjoy it. Thank you.
Joel, come up. Just say your name.
Hello, my name is Julian Penix. I'm the coach of the 12 U Elliott softball team.
Also, he's an exceptional athlete and plays all over the world, too.
I just want to just say real quickly that Bessie, when they say she helps across the city of Pittsburgh, she really does. I called her one day and I asked her, but she was over in Squaw Hill helping the Squaw Hill Athletic, I don't know if you remember this, but every time I call her, she's somewhere across the city of Pittsburgh helping somebody do something. And she does a great job. So thank you for everything you do for the city of Pittsburgh, and especially our Elliott West End Athletic. Everybody want to come up for a picture, photo? You want to come up with the city champions? I just want to say we have city champions and world champions here today. I wouldn't look like I was tall. And I just, real quickly, want to thank Lori Marabella in our office for writing all the proclamations. She's been holding our office down. We have somebody on leave, and so she's been doing a great job. So I want to thank her for that.
And we have five to be read into the record.
Councilperson Sharland presents, be it further resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, September 13th, 2025, to be Deaconess Catherine Georgia Sellers Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilmembers Strasburger and Sharland present, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the September 18th, 2025, as Allegheny Clean Ways Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilperson Coghill presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, September 27th, 2025, to be Fred Metting Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilmember Coghill also presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, September 20th, 2025, to be Melissa Kilmer Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilmember Coghill presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, September 20th, 2025, to be Patricia Zinger Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve all proclamations?
So move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
All the proclamations have been approved. Our next order business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which may be before City Council. Profaning will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. Our first one is your speaker, Dr. Ronald Miller.
Dr. Ronald Miller, Downtown and Ciudad de Mexico, EUM, I've been called the Janus Ciudad or City. I'm a candidate representing the Global Intelligence Society for Mayor 2025 and for President of the United States 2028, Global Information and Intelligence Network.net. Concerns of council include the vote, local government, ally sister cities. This is consistent with my 2025-2028 initiatives, vote-by-voter verification for whom, local government, no-party government based on the best information and intelligence available for policy, construction, and city allies. I mean, I think that Ciudad de Mexico, EUM, is like the city of Pittsburgh. It's a Janus city, you know, January, Janus, facing backward, facing forward in time. Here is something positive, Janus like facing backward in our past. Home rule charter, city of Pittsburgh, 1974, Article II, the executive branch, HRC, 202 qualifications of the mayor. The mayor shall have been a resident of the city for at least three years immediately preceding the election. That's it. Anything added by the Democratic Party or Republican Party is irrelevant. Anything added by the Allegheny County Election Division is irrelevant. Allegheny County Election Division signatures are illegitimate. The signatures have no verification. ACED fees are insulting. There's nothing in the US Constitution that requires somebody to pay a fee in order to compete for office. A 15-year-old at Westing A 15-year-old at Westinghouse High School with 30,000 votes can be elected mayor of the City of Pittsburgh in 2025 or 2029, and I encourage the kids to do that. I encourage you who are listening and watching to do it. Go out and find somebody, in my view, who is high-level intelligence, Westinghouse High School has them, and high-level sophistication in information. That person can be put into the ballot and become the mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, and there's nothing that the establishment can do about it. This is a very positive thing in terms of the Janus-like looking back and forward. There is a looking in a way that is also destructive when it comes to Janus. Yes, no, the Democratic Party and Republican Party say, oh yeah, go ahead, run for office, but you have to comply. They say no, basically you have to back off because you have to comply with the rules that are established by county entities like the ACED and the 2,243 that are across this country in order to be able to compete. This is not constitutional. It is not consistent with the home rule charter of the City of Pittsburgh. The blank part at the bottom of the ballot that they say is legitimate ballot, that's the only part that is legitimate.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Mori.
Hi, I'm Chris Mori, I live in Squirrel Hill, District 8, and I'm also the Executive Director of Inform Up Pittsburgh, a nonprofit, reporting weekly on City Council, and with that reporting including surveys, so that we can deliver readers preferences directly to council. So with that, here's the feedback from the issues raised and discussed last week. With respect to employment requirements for driver's licenses, we asked readers, should the City Council lobby the state to pass laws similar to those in Washington, Oregon, and California preventing employers from requiring driver's licenses if it's not part of the job? 24 of 44 respondents were in support with 20 opposed. One reader from District 7 in support said, many jobs don't actually require driving but still demand licenses. This discriminates against people who can't afford cars or have disabilities. In opposition, someone from District 5 argued that this is government overreach, employers should be able to set their own requirements. With respect to the co-response teams and overtime eligibility, we asked whether those officers and social workers should be eligible for overtime. Seventy-six percent were in favor with 12 opposed. Sorry, there's a lot of pages, it's very large font. One reader in District 1 said in support, these teams provide critical services during off-hours when mental health crises don't stop, they deserve fair compensation. And one reader from District 4 raised a concern, acknowledging that budget concerns are real, but this seems like a necessary expense for public safety. And then with respect to the surveillance cameras, we asked readers to select their top three considerations. The most important safeguards that should be in place within the city's policies related to surveillance cameras. The top three were, with 59% selecting that prioritizing clear policies on who can access that footage, regular public reports on camera usage, and prohibiting facial recognition technologies were the top three. One member from District 7 emphasized the need for clear policies on who can access footage and for what purpose, no fishing expeditions, and critically against, someone from, critically against the use of surveillance cameras. I don't want any surveillance cameras, that's a slippery slope to a surveillance state. We'll have the complete survey results sent out in writing, including a breakdown of results by district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ikahana Halmalkina. We'll come back to her. Our next speaker is Janine Rowland.
My name is Janine Rowland, Mount Washington. Today, special topic before I move on, jurisdiction. Right now, jurisdiction decides entirely too much about a child's history, identity, and their safety. All of it can be lost at the county line. This is not just about which courtroom hears a case, it is about whether a child is seen at all. Stripped of this, children dismiss any attempt at connection. They stop trusting safe adults because the unsafe ones were never held accountable for the tricks that they play. They stop believing in justice because they themselves were never respected in its halls. They lose themselves. Indulge me. I brought these items with me today to illustrate why identity must remain accessible across jurisdiction. In native tradition, we often teach that objects hold meaning beyond their mundaneness. They are anchors of identity, preserving history, heritage, culture, and faith. It is procedural failure for these anchors to remain unconsidered in the law. This plaque right here says, niece, my aunt, no blood relation, gave it to me nearly 20 years ago. It has survived every move, every storm. It reminds me of a love that began the moment she saw me. And this, this is a custody order. For me, the date on this, August 28, 1995, is the date of my adoption. Four months earlier, I nearly froze to death. On a nine-hour car ride from Pennsylvania to Virginia, no windows, no heat, no shoes, no socks. Seventeen years later, the man I recognize as my father handed me this and said, paper does not make a family, love does. I did not need additional paper to tell me what I already knew. You see, you can't notarize love, but you can honor it, and you can certainly do so across state lines. The law anticipates this. The Uniform Child Custody Jurisdiction and Enforcement Act, or the UCCJEA, in Section 204, grants emergency jurisdiction to any state if a child has been abandoned or needs protection from mistreatment or abuse. Yet too often, these protections are ignored. So today I close with this. Is family jurisdictional? Because it wasn't the day I almost died. Jurisdiction did not decide whether I lived or died. Love did. Thank you.
Thank you. You may not be with us. So that exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Hi, Bernadette from Beachview. I knew I needed to speak after watching last week's four-hour inclusionary housing hearing. I was not sure of my words, though. What do I say? I did my research on a current housing development in Carrick. The developer has history, y'all know my research, of some pretty shady and illegal court doo-doo, including improper lead abatement schemes, fair housing and discrimination employment cases, civil rights cases, pay kickbacks, and bribes to Cleveland City officials, issues with rent assistance programs, never receiving money promised to tenants and landlords, on and on. Y'all need to hire better vetters in the city. I am sorry, but Bernardo Katz and Danny Berkowitz's PTSD comes to mind. This all stems from segregation, but today, the abuse of kids. I read Teresa's statement about our failed system, a system I once proudly worked in, foster care. And I was the only Pittsburgh South Hills therapeutic foster home with society's throwaway teens from Carrick, The Hill, Homewood, Washington County. How they made it to be teens, I'll never know, and every single one of my babies, they had families that were segregated and couldn't make it, and misforced, undue-stressed, and struggles, and ultimately kids thrown out like yesterday's trash. Segregation separates, segregation destroys. Big-money developers separate by segregation. Big-money developers destroy the fabric of our city. Mayor Ganey's citywide inclusionary housing bill will stop the evils of segregation. Do not let any more of our babies be found dead due to segregation. Pass this inclusionary housing bill. I sat there at a meeting last week and was told by a state official, the reason why Beachview doesn't get a whole bunch of stuff that's been happening is because, quote-unquote, we're on the edge of her district map. When Danny DZDZI had our area, he didn't care. If he had to run out St. Pius or whatever, he did whatever he could. When we needed a new sidewalk all the way around the senior center, DZI made that happen. I love the new district line person, whatever, but Beachview is getting segregated. And it's not just Beachview, it's going to be in all these other neighborhoods. I don't know if some of you were just too young to remember, but I remember when Frank Igliotti tried to go back. Pass Ed Ganey's inclusionary housing bill.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I want to address something that I said last week. Let me start by, President Councilman LaBelle, when you come for me, please make sure you bring your right news. I did apply. I applied, but let me tell you what I was doing that day. There was an overdose over in Baxter Park. There was a young man who got killed down the street, and I was dealing with his grieving mother, and I also was trying to make sure I applied for the grant. I called and I spoke to the young man who was sitting over there, his last name is Mr. Reynolds, who was overseeing him, and he said, Sam, 12 minutes, 2 days, 20 seconds, late is late. So when you come, I don't know what this slumber you are in, my work is impeccable. I'm always on point. I missed a deadline, so I did apply. So watch your words next time, because I can bring other information, generally, about what it is I do. I'm here because I continue to keep telling you guys, time and time again, this is about Mr. Mosley, and I had a conversation. I'm not going to get into it because I've had a previous conversation since last week. But if you want to check me because of your friend, Councilman LaBelle, ask your friend why I'm here, and I'll be here, and I'll continue to be here. I sent an email out to all you all, not one of you all, not none of you all have addressed that. I've asked him time and time again to send it. So when you come for me, come for me correct, because I know Mr. Zapala would like to know how the city's so broken, your family's still thriving down there on the hill. Let me leave you all with this. Quit calling me, quit texting me. Tell all your hitters to stop, because I'm not afraid of that. I'm a nigga who's from the streets, and I make sure I hold the streets. I do what I got to because these, I love the streets. All I'm saying to you all, if you're going to hold me to a standard, then why can't we hold you all to a standard? If you're going to be truthful and transparent and authentic, keep it that way. Don't change on me. And I'm trying to be real, and I'm trying to keep it a buck. That's what y'all like, the street, right?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I live at 715 Mercer Street, up in The Hill District, the high-rise up on Befford. Red alert, red alert. The community members are asking, where is Stan, the produce man? We usually would have produce on Wiley, we haven't seen him. And he has been like one of our, one of our own people from our neighborhood, even though he don't live in The Hill, he's been working and bringing fruits and vegetables to the citizens up in The Hill District. My mother knew him, she talked about how he would bring the fruits and vegetables to the seniors. Another thing is that, I call myself writing stuff down. I do want to say something that's been bothering me for quite a while. I live up on Befford, and then go Miss Gross, she got to talk, okay? I live up on top of Befford, up there in The Hill District, and I watched them when they refinished the parking lot. It's something that it is, it is like a work of art. You had to see them, where they started on the outside of the lark, of the lot, you had one, one man on the machine pushing the dirt, another one right beside them, and then the third one would come and smash it in the middle. I'm speaking too fast, because it's really something that we should let our children see, because it's like a work of art. You see them, they measure, they remeasure, these are things that we could have our children. Okay, we want you to do this parking lot. Show us, show them, and then let them try. A lot of times, you need to see to believe it, and it's really beautiful up there. If you would look at the lot, I saw them, and now they also did something that I didn't notice before, is that they, where the handicap is, is blue, so if you see blue, that means for handicap. Also, I want you just to understand that I was trying to explain to the councilwoman about how, how we seem to be ignored. And one thing I would like to say is that, when Special Agent brought the white homeless man, how, when she was speaking, Ms. Warwick ran while she's speaking, talking to the white homeless man. I've never seen one of you come to Agent, say Special Agent, and ask her any questions, and she comes all the time. This woman comes and she's determined to let you know, we are human beings, even though we might be darker than you. If you cut me, my blood still comes out the same color. So we're all the same, it's just that we're darker on the outside. I still have a heart, I don't think that some of you do.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cerise Taylor, Missing Child, Special Agent Sunshine. Like really, you really want to be the star that bad, Mosley? Really? You're not, I'm so sorry, but God sees your deceitfulness, which is in vain, I promise you it is. Thank you, Lord, for your protection from death, malignant narcissists, narcissistic abuse is real, I'm part of it, and corrupt government officials who engage and allow voodoo practices, distill the resources of others, forcing them to be homeless, living on the street. Though homeless, living on the street, I still live in peace. Now that peace is being disturbed by corrupt, sure, officials. Really? Where were they when a man was ODing? When they were cleaning the porta-potties near where I'm sleeping? It was staged. They're staging overdoses now, and then here they come, after the so-called overdose gets up, is no longer overdosing, and just walks away from the scene. Here they come, knocking on porta, pounding on porta-potty doors. Here they come knocking on porta, pounding on porta-potty doors, trying to act like they are concerned. You okay in there? Is everybody okay? Really? I'm in there praying. I'm forced out. Everything that I possess thrown out. Time to stop praying. That's the energy I'm encountering now while I'm praying by sheriff officials who want to look like they're important. They're not. Your position, your badge, your gun, none of it means nothing to God. Only your heart, which he makes beat. And you keep oppressing us and he's going to make them stop. Every cold malicious heart, he's stopping. I promise you, get ready, prepare for yours to stop. None of you will live forever. We all have a death sentence. Praise God. 2 Thessalonians 3:3 says, "But the Lord is faithful and he will strengthen you and protect you." He's not going to give me no more than I can bear. My cup runneth over, judge me for everything I possess. They're all blessings for somebody else. It's always somebody else out here who needs help. None of you are helping me. He's going to supply me with all of my needs through his riches and glory, regardless of whether you help me or not. Whatever belongs to me, belongs to me, he's going to return it. The wisdom for today comes from Proverbs 10:28. "The hope of the righteous is joy, but the expectation of the wicked will perish." In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Howard H. P. Jackson, Black Political Empowerment Project. Grew up with NAACP, all my life in Pittsburgh. The reflection is, we got chaos around the world and we've been programmed with fear. And you know what today is? It's about getting people out to register to vote. That's the main objective, to get people out to register to vote. I'll tell you what, 60 years done resurrected itself with the system. And a lot of people don't believe our vote counts. And we got to go ahead and inspire our children the responsibility, the value of your vote. Thank you. Voting is power. Voting is power. We have to go ahead and interact with our children, because I'm going to tell you something. This last election with the, with the president, here it is, you had a black woman telling the public the truth. And you had another, you had the Republican Party giving you fear, giving you fear. And it's happening now. The process of the administration trying to get rid of the government, its values. I see dictatorship with the Republican Party. Not just to say that the Democrats are saints, but there's a choice here for human rights, human rights. I weren't really want you to think about that, human rights and, you know, the civil rights and about how important it is for that special moment to cast your vote, to cast your votes. You, you look at like the 1800s, 1900s, and we're at 2000s today. And we watched the chaos. We watched LBJ, Martin Luther King, transform unity to have the power for vote, for voting. Pittsburgh, we need to go ahead and advocate our young people about the power, the power, the choice to make that vote count, to make that vote count, to make our vote count. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's David Tessitore, Banksville, District 2. In aviation, when there's an accident, an investigation is done. And a knee-jerk response might be that it's pilot error, but investigators who've been at it for a while know that actually more often than not, it's a structural problem. That structure might be the training of the pilots. For example, with the Boeing crashes that caused over 500 people to be killed back-to-back, they had taken away any mention of what could be done to deal with the problem that caused those. It could be relations with other entities involved, et cetera. But structural problems tend to be more the responsibility of what's a dire situation. Now, as you know, I've come before you talk about the problem with the parks. And as I've looked into it more and more, once again, I see a structural issue. We have, what, over $10 million going into a fund that isn't, that actually the, the referendum on that was that it would be used for the disadvantaged neighborhoods. And unfortunately, we haven't seen that happen. Who's responsible? It's not the parks people. They're doing what they can. It's not Public Works. They're doing what they can. It's nobody on this council's fault. It's not even the mayor's office's fault. But it's a structural issue. I don't know about you, but when I was young, I heard saying that too many cooks boil the broth. And what we have is too many hands in the management of the parks. It used to be that we had a parks department that managed everything. And that's what we need to get back to. We need to have, whether it's a parks commission, we want to call it, or whatever, we need to have a process where it's entirely managed through the parks. And then maybe we can see things done more effectively. It's a, it's a structural solution. Now, how do we get to there? Well, we don't need to hire expensive consultants and spend out more money. It's one of the reasons I addressed you last week about having community advisory team. There's a saying in, that the Highland School, which trained the civil rights and, and union people of the past century, that those who have the problem hold the solution. And I think we can get that from within the citizenry, having people come together to investigate and consider and bring to you potential solutions. So that's what I'm working on. That's what you can need to be aware of. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill Number 2242, Ortenance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct, Article V, Chapter 65104, by adding the definition for the protected class of housing status, amending 65903 to include past or present housing status as a class protected from housing discrimination, as well as simplifying 65903 by not listing each protected class in each subsection.
Mr. President, can I be added as a sponsor of that legislation?
Yes.
Thank you.
That takes us to Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2238, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Bronner Group K-9 Services LLC in an Amount Not to Exceed $9,500 for Payment of One K-9 Unit. And Bill 2239, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an Agreement or Agreements with Kilo Three Consulting Agency LL3 for Trainer-Led On-Site K-9 Training at a Cost Not to Exceed $8,500 over one year.
And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology. Thank you. Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2173, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 543 of 2022 entitled, "Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into a Cooperation Agreement with the Urban Redevelopment Authority in Order to Receive a Grant from the Pennsylvania Budget Office Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program for the Renovation of Warrington Recreation Center in the Amount of $1,500,000 and Authorizing Expenditures for this Stated Purpose to Update Accounting Information for the Local Capital Match."
And Councilwoman Kale Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2241, Resolution Further Amending Resolution 857 of 2023, effective December 27, 2023, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2024 Capital Budget, the Proposed 2024 Community Development Program and a 2024 Through 2029 Capital Improvement Program by Decreasing Facility Improvements, Sports Facilities by $180,000 and Increasing Facility Improvements, Recreation and Senior Centers by $180,000." And Bill 2245, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Enter into, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, a lease agreement or agreements with Bike Share Pittsburgh, Inc., to utilize a portion of that certain city-owned parcel. 29M15102, Fourth Ward, City of Pittsburgh, 90 Wormsour Way, Council District 3, for the purpose of placing and maintaining a shipping container to be used for storage of equipment at no cost to the city.
And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2243, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements in order to advance the Fraser Street Steps Replacement Project at no cost to the city. And Bill Number 2244, Resolution Amending Resolution 562 of 2019, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a professional services agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and ATC Group Services LLC for architectural and engineering design services related to the stormwater management and renovation of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police firing range by increasing the total spend by $380,740 for a new, not to exceed amount of $750,000.
And next is Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development. Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2250, Ortenance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article V, Use Regulations, Chapter 911, Primary Uses, to Add Restricted Personal Goods Retail, to Add Specific Requirements and Conditional Use Application Requirements.
And then I have one sponsored bill and two communications.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 2246, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a Cooperation Agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of Pittsburgh to document local cooperation in the Housing Authority's agreement to make payments in lieu of taxes for Bedford Dwelling Stage III Housing Development. Bill 2247, Communication from Jake Polack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended September 12, 2025. And Bill 2248, Communication from Rachel Heisler, City Controller, submitting a performance audit of the Department of Public Safety's 911 Response Times and Wellness dated September 2025.
Need a motion to re-receiving file?
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Both bills are re-receiving and filed. Will now move on to unfinished business with the appointment of Nicole Turney to the Gender Equity Commission.
Bill Number 1756, Resolution Appointing Nicole Turney as a member of the Gender Equity Commission with a term to expire April 1, 2028.
Need a motion to approve?
To move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Ms. Turney's appointment to the Gender Equity Commission has been approved. Our next order of business is reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2231, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for September 10, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2174, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant Payable to Regional Opportunity Center, joining business as Vibrant Pittsburgh for annual membership dues in the amount of $50,000 payable in 2025. Bill 2198, Ortenance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ortenances Title II Fiscal, Article V, Special Funds, Chapter 236, Workforce Development Fund, by amending Section 23601, Establishment of the Workforce Development Fund to allow the Department of Human Resources to manage and direct the fund with the Office of Management and Budget, and Section 23603, Priorities to Create Additional Allowable Uses of the Fund's Assets.
You've heard the reading entitled the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill, having received illegally required numbers of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2232, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for September 10, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2184, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter into a License Agreement or Agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Plaza at Grandview Owners Association at a Cost Not to Exceed $105,600 over five years. Bill 2186, Resolution Authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, Acceptance of Gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from community family advocates, any amount of $483,300 to support the City of Pittsburgh's co-resorts and downtown policing programs.
You've heard the reading entitled the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill, having received illegally, legally required numbers of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 2233, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for September 10, 2025 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 2172, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of Public Works and the Director of the Department, of the Department of Finance to enter into a lease agreement or lease agreements with the Pittsburgh Center for Arts and Media for the use of the SCAFE Residence and the SCAFE Annex Marshall Garage for a period of 20 years in
for a Period of 20 Years in an Annual Rental Fee of $1 per Year. Bill 2176, Resolution Granting a Vacation of Mulberry Way, 20-Foot Right-of-Way from 12th Street to 13th Street, at No Cost to the City in the 2nd Ward, 1st Council District. Bill 2177, Resolution Granting a Vacation of East General Robinson Street and Goodrich Street at No Cost to the City in the 23rd Ward, 1st Council District. Bill 2178, Resolution Granting a Vacation of Casino Way, a 15-Foot Right-of-Way from North Homewood Avenue and Zenith Way, at No Cost to the City in the 13th Ward, 9th Council District. Bill 2179, Resolution Granting unto Almino LP, their successors and assigns, the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense at No Cost to the City, Foundation Footings and Foundation Drain at 4612 Lytle Street in the 15th Ward, 5th Council District. Bill 2180, Resolution Granting unto Carnegie Mellon University, their successors and assigns, the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense at No Cost to the City, SOE Walls, a Nitrogen Tank, Remote Filling Station, Concrete Pad, Storm Water Vault, Two Storm Manholes, and Cleanout Curbs, Generator Pad, a Small Portion of Generator, Screening Fence, Water Meter Vault, Retaining Walls, Ticket Gate, Tree Planters, and Stone Seating Landscape Features at 4664 Forbes Avenue, 4th Ward, 8th Council District. Bill 2182, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to Enter into a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with CD McGuire, Inc., for Project Design Management Services and Reviews in Connection with Various City of Pittsburgh Projects to Add Funding for the Preliminary Engineering Phase, increasing the total not to exceed of $3,778,601.20, an Increase of $67,344.47 reimbursable at 95%. And Bill 2222, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Larson Design Group for Costs Associated with Limited Preconstruction and Construction Services Management, Inspections and Special Inspections related to new construction of a Combined Public Safety Station, and Providing for the Payment Not to Exceed $732,937.34 over a Period of Two Years.
You've heard the reading entitled the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill, having received illegally required numbers of votes, is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Teresa Kale Smith, presenting the Committee of Recreation Youth and Senior Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Teresa Kale Smith presents Bill 2234, Reported a Committee on Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services for September 10, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2188, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an Agreement or Agreements with Allegheny County Department of Human Services for the City's Operation of its Senior Community Centers. Said Agreement or Agreement shall be for a Term at No Cost to the City with Compensation to the City Not to Exceed $785,709. Bill 2189, Resolution Amending Resolution 32, Effective January 29, 2025, which Authorizes the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into an Agreement in Individual Amounts of $10,000 or Less with Performers, Instructors, Artists, Referees, and Persons with Specialized Skills in Connection with the Department's Recreational and Instructional Programs and Special Event Services by Clarifying the Payment Methods That May Be Used for Said Expenses. And Bill 2191, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Board of Public Education for the Purpose of Providing Meals in Connection with the 2025-26 Food Service Program, cost not to exceed $750,000 over one year.
You heard the reading entitled the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill, having received illegally required numbers of votes, is passed finally. That moves us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, presenting the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2235, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for September 10, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2175, Resolution Amending Resolution 628 of 2024, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements and Amendments thereto with Vision Point Systems to obtain Twilio Flex Support Services with the General Objective of Retaining VPS to Provide Exceptional and Reliable Services for All Our Call Centers by Increasing the Approved Amount by $32,000 for an amended Total Cost Not to Exceed $48,000 over three years. Bill 2185, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into a Professional Services Agreement or Agreements with Roll Call Technologies LLC for a Web-Based Secondary Employment Scheduling System in an Amount Not to Exceed $85,392.12 over five years. Bill 2190, Resolution Amending Resolution 489 of 2024, which Authorizes the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to Enter into an Agreement with Information Age Technologies, Inc. for the Copilot Annual Subscription Fee for the Healthy Active Living Senior Center Software by Including the Negotiated Amount for Years Two and Three of the Three-Year Term and Increasing the Cost by $52,690 for a New Cost Not to Exceed $73,690.
You've heard the reading entitled the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill, having received illegally required numbers of votes, is passed finally. And finally, Councilwoman Craig Mosley, presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 2236, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for September 10, 2025, with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 2181, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to Enter into a Cooperation Agreement with Pittsburgh Regional Transit for Construction and Post-Construction Access and Maintenance of a Certain Area within and along the East Busway Ramp adjacent to the Intersection of 26th Street and Liberty Avenue, located within the 2nd Ward of the City of Pittsburgh for Purposes of the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Project, all at No Cost to the City.
You've heard the reading entitled the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kale Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, or, I'm sorry, Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill, having received illegally required numbers of votes, is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Anything for members? Councilwoman Smith?
I just briefly want to talk a little bit about what happened on our field this week, this past weekend, at the football program. And there's a lot of volunteers that put the football program together. They do a lot of work. And it was in Shortshire City. If you know Shortshire City, it's an extremely proud community. I talk about it all the time. It has some of the highest homeownership in the City of Pittsburgh, low crime, great community. People take great pride in their properties. And yet, this weekend, someone bought a gun to a game for kids. And I'm just getting so sick of it, honestly, what's happening with our kids. And I feel like, if you have to bring a gun to a game, stay home. And, you know, I do want to say that the Mustangs hired somebody to do security, and they responded quickly, which stopped the person from shooting somebody, or whatever they were going to do. But it shouldn't even get to that. We shouldn't have to have armed security at games. These are kids. And some of the activities that we accept and think it's just either cultural, or it's acceptable, or it's just the age, or whatever, is not okay. I mean, we really have to rethink what we're doing here, and how we're doing it, and what we're allowing to happen. We don't have enough officers to be every place. And they can't afford to hire all the security that we need. So you're going to end up preventing kids from playing on fields because you can't control yourself. And I get some, this person was probably in their twenties, from what I understand, and they're young, too. But these are, you know, younger kids that are being affected by these decisions. And, I mean, just all the stuff I've seen this past week, it's just really upsetting to me with what's happening with our kids in general. I mean, you saw all those little kids that were killed by a mom, a little kid that was found in a car with broken bones, and his mother had a gun. And just the suffering our kids are going through. And I just felt like we need to do something better. And I don't know what it means, but I was just talking to Councilwoman Strausberger, and talked to Councilwoman Warwick and Gross. I think we need to do something to come up with better systems and work really hard at changing some things so we're getting real results for our kids. When our, somebody calls CYF, or somebody does something to take a kid out of a home, I understand we want to bring the kids back with their families. I understand that's a good thing for them to be. But sometimes what we do is we take them out of homes, and they're abused in every foster home they go into. Or there's all kinds of things that we're hearing that are happening to our kids, whether it's in a foster home, whether it's in their natural home, wherever it is, our kids are struggling and going through some horrific things. And I just wish we, as a council, could do, have more conversations with the county about what they're doing. And I understand, I hear all the comments about people are short-staffed. But I'll be honest with you, I have never seen so many social workers working in the City of Pittsburgh and in Allegheny County as I do currently. That, now granted, the need might be extremely, you know,